To the September 10, 2024 City Council Meeting, please stand for the invocation by Dr. Wilder, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for Lynchburg City Council, the work we do in our community. We thank you for the citizens, our staff members. We thank you for all the workers that are working together, continue to give us unity. We speak peace in our city. We speak peace on City Council. We speak peace with our staff members. We work on unity. We continue to bless you, forgive us the ideas and the knowledge to work our city together. That is better for our citizens than to work together to make it a better place to live, work, and play. In your precious name, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one. In this peaceful, clear, clean, just, strong.
Tonight, I have one special recognition I would like to give for a Linkhorn Middle School eighth grader in the audience. Dylan, would you stand up? Dylan Childress is with us tonight. He is currently an eighth grader at Linkhorn Middle School, where he has played his school on his school soccer team and tennis teams. He finished his seventh grade year with straight A's and was recently invited to join the National Junior Honor Society. He also plays the double bass for a school orchestra and the Lynchburg Youth String Orchestra. He is a son from both parents, nephew, grandson, and great-grandson of military veterans and considers it an honor and privilege to continue the legacy of service his family has created, serving in the military. And he's also going to be my special assistant on Monday at Linkhorn Middle when I go to the seventh grade English classes. So, thank you so much, Dylan, for being here. We appreciate it. And good job, Mom and Dad. Okay. Tonight, City Council Agenda is divided into four sections: Consent Agenda, Public Hearing, Public Comment, and General Business. The first section is the Consent Agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. Actually, you know what? Let me go back one second. Thank you to you and your family members for their service also, and for all of the veterans, anyone here who served, because tomorrow is 9/11. And I think we just need to make note of that for those who were honoring tomorrow especially. So, thank you very much. Okay. The first section is the Consent Agenda. This section includes routine items and all items that may be approved by one vote. May I have a motion on the Consent Agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote. If we went second, I apologize. There we go. The motion passes 6-1. Great. The next section is Public Hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Procedure: Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to for counsel for deliberation. Consideration of adopting an ordinance changing the polling place for Ward 3, Precinct 4, from Compassion Church of the Nazarene to Heritage High School. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Mr. Dan Millpence.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, we have in front of you the request to relocate the polling place, Third Ward, Fourth Precinct, from its current location at Church of the Nazarene, First Church of the Nazarene, to Heritage High School. The main reason for this change is because the church has decided they no longer wish to serve as a precinct. We have, with the Electoral Board, done the research to see what would be appropriate facility in that precinct, and we have come up with the high school there. And so, we would like the City Council to review this and approve it as a replacement polling place for the Church of the Nazarene. So, expected action is Electoral Board would like to make use of the Heritage High School for the Fourth Precinct and the Third Ward, starting with November 5, 2024 general election, and continuing through all subsequent elections for the indefinite future. The distance of the polling place from the old polling place to new polling place is .7 miles. The new polling place is a city-owned school property, therefore, it has kind of an inherent ADA requirement compliance that's built in. And we've also evaluated the parking and the location in the high school is adequate or more than adequate for what we were having in the church. And one advantage that we have in the new location would be that curbside voters, that is voters that come up to the polling place but vote from their car, can be seen from the precinct window, from the cafeteria there directly. And so, that would be a little bit less back and forth for voters who wanted to vote that way. Any questions?
No, we will call you back up if we have any. Thank you so much. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this change? Anyone here who would like to speak in opposition?
The manager.
Any voicemails from citizens?
There are none.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. The matter rests with council. Oh, Vice Mayor? Oh, no? Okay.
Second.
Okay. And you just, oh, Councilman Helgason.
Thank you, Mr. Pence. You know, it's been a great location. The church has been fantastic. They've been a great community partner as people have been voting there for a long time. It's been fantastic what they've done, and I recognize that sometimes things change, and I'm glad you found a new place. So, thank you.
Councilman Rich.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Pence, for putting that together and getting to work on that so quickly. As somebody who resides in the 304th precinct, we don't have 304. It's, you know, we have precinct 3 or 4. I started out voting in Heritage Elementary. I then moved to the First Church of the Nazarene, I think is what it was called initially, and then it became Compassion Church. And I just want to thank them for the many years that they've served our community and the civic process in being a precinct. They've been a great church to work with on that. They do a lot of great things over there. That's just one of them. So, I just thank them for that. And Heritage High School will be a superb location with all the accessibility requirements we need. So, I appreciate it.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes, thank you. For not understanding that the residents that vote there will be getting notices of the new change, is that correct?
Yes.
And we will, pardon? I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Those notices go out one month from Election Day, so they'll have adequate notice. That law just changed. It used to be 15 days, it's now 30 days. So, we'll be sending that out to get them that notice by the 30-day mark.
Excellent, thank you, appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Waldy?
Quick question I didn't ask when we reviewed this last time. Where's the entrance going to be? Because...
The entrance is at the rear of the school. So, if you come around to where the main parking area is, you'll see that there's a, I don't know, pathway, yeah, going up to the cafeteria itself. And so, all of the activity would be contained within that cafeteria area. It wouldn't be coming in one of the other entrances and going there, it'd be going into the cafeteria doors and into the cafeteria.
Is that the doorway where, when you walk in, to the left is the gym, and to the right is the theater?
Yes, that is correct. That is the main entrance into the cafeteria from the outside, yes.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Thank you very much. You can go ahead and vote.
Councilmembers Taylor, Wilder, and Dolan, could you cast your vote?
I've already done it, but then my screen turned off.
Should you hit the e-vote button?
Mine said I already voted.
Okay, you're in. Councilman Taylor?
About work.
Mine says I already voted.
Yeah, it went through.
Oops.
Did you vote against her? Nope, did you? There we go. The motion passes.
Great, thank you. Okay, consideration of adopting an ordinance authorizing the grant and conveyance of a right-of-way and easement to Appalachian Power Company on property owned by the city, more specifically 1100 Jefferson Street and 89th Street. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Mr. Clay Simmons.
Hello.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Again, Madam Mayor, you pretty well covered the item. This was brought before a councilwork session on June 11. This is merely an easement to provide permanent power to the improvements at Riverfront Park. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we'll bring you back up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would the petitioner like to make a presentation? No? Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Any voicemails from citizens?
There are none.
Okay. Well, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Taylor?
He covered everything, and all we have to do is vote for the easement.
Okay. Well said. Okay, let's go ahead and vote then.
The motion passes 7-0.
All right. Consideration of adopting an ordinance changing a certain area located at 5114 and 5208 Woodall Road for Beacon Credit Union Headquarters. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. Rachel Freshheisen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council. The subject property proposed to be rezoned consists of 4.03 acres located on portions of 5114 and 5208 Woodall Road. The purpose of the rezoning petition is to allow, I don't know what's happening, is to allow, oh. Is to allow, okay, great, thank you. To allow the construction of a 40,000-square-foot, four-story office building and associated parking to be used as the corporate headquarters of Beacon Credit Union. The property is recommended for employment to uses on our city's future land use map. These areas are intended to include light and heavy manufacturing, research, and development, flex-based, and large-scale office uses. Restaurant, hotel, and business service uses may also be appropriate. During our planning commission meeting on July 24, the commission noted that the large-scale office use would be appropriate and compatible with the employment-to designation and fit into the surrounding area. But without proffers, the property may not be developed in that manner, and the B5 zoning would allow a wide range of uses that may not be appropriate. Planning Commission ultimately did recommend approval of the petition. Following that meeting, the petitioner and property owner have had some discussions and decided to put forth proffers regarding this concern in order to limit potentially incompatible uses that would be permitted by the B5 district. And the list of proffered uses is included in your report. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after our public hearing.
Okay, thank you so much. Would the petitioner like to make a presentation?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for seeing us this evening. Ashley Rachel has stated very well that this is where we're zoning for a new corporate office building for Beacon. My name is Michael Bryan. I'm with Hurt &amp; Profit, representing them as the engineer for this project. And I would like to introduce Mr. McConville. He's the CEO of Beacon, and he would like to say a few things.
Just that, this process started for us about four years ago, and we've been looking around, trying to find a location for a new corporate headquarters. This was an initiative that was started by our board and our management team, and we needed to try to identify a piece of property that was large enough to accommodate this type of facility. And we want to be able to consolidate all of our support functions and all of our management functions into this one thing, as well as provide for future growth. And we're looking at a five- to 10-year growth scale here. The property had a couple of things we put on it as far as we wanted to be able to accommodate the size of that building, and we wanted it to be very visible so that we could raise our brand awareness in this market. And we feel like this piece of property that we've identified will meet all those needs. And so, you know, we would ask that you guys sign off on it tonight.
Okay.
And once again, just if y'all have any questions or anything, I'll be happy to answer them at the site.
Okay, and we'll call you back up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this project? Anyone opposed? Any voicemails?
There are none.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. The matter rests with council. Vice Mayor?
We have approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Good luck. There you are, lost you.
Okay. Dr. Wilder?
I'm just glad to see business expanded in our community. I really appreciate them. I'll continue to do service in Lynchburg community. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments, questions? No? Okay, let's vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Yay. Okay. Consideration of adopting an ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way known as Walls Landing. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. E. Burgenthaler.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of Council, Elmwood Holdings is petitioning to vacate a portion of Walls Landing Drive located adjacent to 101 Dora Road and 123 Goodyear Drive. Another phase of development, including an extension of the right-of-way, was previously proposed for this area, but the developer is no longer pursuing it. The street vacation is proposed to allow the sale of the undeveloped property and remove the unimproved portion of right-of-way from city maintenance. The area to be vacated is currently behind a gate and has not been improved for public use. The vacation would not impact vehicle or pedestrian access. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would the petitioner like to make a presentation?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Ron Blackwood, Andy Flint, Elmwood Holdings. Yeah, we did design after design and redesign for that phase, and it's just not feasible. And I think we had deet it over a small, little tiny section when it was going to be a road through there. And now, it's going to be a private drive for a six-acre parcel, and we'd just like to ask for that to be returned to us, please. It will be a six-acre parcel.
Okay. Great. Well, we'll call you back up if we have any more questions. Thank you so much. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Any voicemails?
There are none.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed. The matter rests with council.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay?
Second.
Okay. Council missions?
Get back there. Really appreciate what you guys are doing back there. Ron, I've known Ron for a long time. I'll tell you what. You want to talk about a responsible, honest guy in this town with integrity to work with, you can trust what Ron does. I appreciate all the work he's done in this city and this community. Known him for many years. This is easy, really easy to do. Thanks.
Great. Councilman Helgason?
And what is nice, excuse me, is seeing the fact that houses were built so many times for the longest time that I've been on council. People said, "Oh, you can't build houses in the city because of the topography. You don't have enough land." That's why apartment after apartment went up on, like out in Timberlake. And I'm glad to see all those homes that are being built back there. Some friends of mine bought one and moved there, and I went and saw it right away. Saw the nice little trail. That may actually be a really good spot to hunt deer, too, that we have. We talked about that earlier this afternoon with all that land, but happy to approve it, and thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions? No? Okay, wonderful, let's vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Great. Okay. Next section is Public Comment. During Public Comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, City Council takes comments made during the Public Comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Citizens often express conflicting and diverse positions regarding specific issues under consideration. To encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidation to persons who may express sometimes unpopular opinions, applause, cheers, or jeers from the audience are not permitted. When appearing before City Council, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults. Others engage in disruptive behavior, use profanity or vulgar language, promote private business ventures, or campaign for office. We'll now hear from, it doesn't look like, is Mr. Santiago here? I don't see him. Okay. So, I'll remove him. We'll now hear from a group representative regarding "To the Men of Lynchburg: A Widow's Perspective and Observations." Ms. Beth White from Citizens United for Lynchburg. Please restate your name, group representative, and locality of residence.
Dr. Beth White.
Dr. Beth White. Yes, you've earned that, Dr. Beth White.
That's okay. Thank you, Dr. Beth White, resident Ward 3. Councilman, I want to say thank you for your years of service. This is my councilman. Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, I speak to you tonight with a heavy heart because it is a subject that I've never thought I would have to bring before you. I was married to Wayne for 29 years, one month, three weeks. We were together for 30 years, one month, one week. And all of that time, I never once saw or heard him raise his voice to me out of anger. He never mocked, ridiculed, or insulted me, nor did he ever allow anyone else to talk to me in a tone that was less than respectful. Wayne also never once talked to or about another female, actually another person, with anything less than respect because that is how he was raised. Wayne was every bit a southern gentleman. Why do I bring this up? For the past one year, nine months, and eight days that she has been in office, the citizens of not just Lynchburg, but throughout the Commonwealth, have watched as Mayor Reed has been subjected to verbal abuse, insults, mockery, and ridicule, not just in public, but on social media and even in these hallowed chambers. She has been practically tarred and feathered by people within our own party. Yes, you heard me correctly. Members of the Lynchburg Republican Party, and especially some of the men, are guilty of this abusive behavior. It is that behavior that I want to focus my remarks on this evening. For you men who sit in those honored seats, especially for those of you who are listening elsewhere, I want to talk to you. You who are married, I'm willing to bet would die to protect your spouse and family. For example, last year, Councilman Misters, you thought that your family was in danger, and you immediately leapt into action to protect your family. I applaud that because that is your duty as a husband and as a father. So, I applaud you for that. For you men, let me ask this question. If your wife was subjected to the same kind of verbal attacks, mental abuse, and social media attacks that Mayor Reed has endured for the past 21 months, how long would you let it happen before you said, "Now, just wait a minute"? How many of you, when walking down the street, if you suddenly see a man physically abusing a woman, and instead of stopping to help the woman, you keep walking and ignore the abuse? It doesn't matter if you know them or not. Chances are that you're going to stop and help the woman. I hope I'm correct. So, if you were willing to stop the physical abuse of a stranger, why are you not also willing to stand up and try to put a stop to the verbal and mental abuse that your own colleague is experiencing? Perhaps you're taking part in the attacks, insults... Perhaps you're taking part in the attacks, insults, and ridicule, or you know the people who are doing it. But let me ask you this: What joy does attacking a woman bring to you? Does it make you feel more manly or macho? Are you that insecure that you need to verbally abuse a woman? I have news for you. From my viewpoint, it actually makes you look like a small, insecure coward. For you men who profess to be Christians but engage in this type of behavior, would you talk about your pastor's wife this way? Probably not. So how are you edifying Christ with your behavior? You all on council have complained about the behavior problems and lack of discipline that we see at school. Children often model their behavior on the adults around them. So explain to me how you can either verbally attack our mayor, or stand by silently and watch, but at the same time complain about the lack of good behavior in our schools. In closing, I'm challenging the men of this city to grow a backbone and stand up for what you know to be right. Just like you wouldn't tolerate the verbal assaults or social media attacks on your spouse or any female in your life, stop allowing the attacks on Mayor Reed. You may be thinking, well, she's a politician, and therefore she asked for it. As a 20-year college student with a string of advanced earned degrees, not honorary, but earned, let me give you an educated word for that: hot wash. Might I suggest that some of you go see the movie The Forge or learn what it means to be a real man? What kind of example are you setting for our children? They are watching you, and so is the rest of Virginia. Mayor Reed, I want to tell you I am sorry that I have stood by and said nothing, waiting for a man to stand up and say enough is enough to stop. By doing that, that only prolonged the attacks. Someone once said, all that is necessary for evil to triumph is for good men to do nothing. We have proven that over the last 21 months. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from a citizen regarding constitutional rights, Katie Yergler. Please restate your name and locality of residence. Is Katie Yergler here? No. Okay, moving on. We'll now hear from a citizen regarding downtown parking police, Melanie Traver. I didn't recognize you with your hair change. It looks lovely, by the way. On a personal note, please restate your name and locality of residence.
Hi, I'm Melanie Traver, Lynchburg. And we, my husband and I, own the training post downtown on Main Street. And so I'm coming here today to talk to you about the ongoing problem that we have with parking. And I think all the merchants on our street and probably all of downtown have the same issues. We have the problem with the construction, which is going to be in front of our building for the next year, which is devastating and everybody else. But we also have the problem with, we're on Main Street, yet we're the only street that has one-hour parking. Everywhere else has two, yet we have the most merchants, which doesn't really make sense. And then there's, I get a lot of deliveries, and some of the other merchants do, and we don't have places that they can really park in. We have designated unloading, but they're 30 minutes, and they're too small. So a big truck can't park there anyways. They're actually useless. We're wasting parking spaces for people. But the main thing is the parking police. We have two officers that are not helpful. They, I thought were supposed to be a liaison besides just giving parking tickets, but they don't. They harass the merchants, and they harass the delivery men and women. And we've had issues even getting our deliveries on numerous occasions because of them. But recently, we had an issue with one in particular that, at this point, I feel is harassment. And he went to give my husband a ticket as he was pulling out. My husband was already moving the car, and he runs up to put a ticket physically on a moving car. Now, this day, the gas was being done on the other side of the street, so Main Street was down to one street in front. And we have both the gas people waving their arms, trying to help traffic, and the parking policeman decides to walk against traffic to go give my husband this ticket, to actually put it on his car as he's moving. My husband leaves, comes back, and the officer comes into our business, this is probably five minutes later, we live around the corner, and proceeds to tell him that he hit him, and he's calling the police and makes a huge scene in our store. My husband did not hit him. He called the police, had the police come, and tried to get them to press charges. They wouldn't. So he goes down to magistrate court and files criminal charges of assault and battery, and we have to spend thousands of dollars to go, and there's clear video cam evidence that he has that shows he wasn't hit, he wasn't touched, he ran and made the choice to go put a ticket on a moving car and getting in the way of traffic and everything else, but costing us thousands of dollars. Am I three minutes over?
Yes, I'm sorry.
If council agrees to her continuing, all of us, she can...
I have one other quick point.
We'll do a consensus vote for 30 more seconds so she can finish her story. Is that okay? Okay, go ahead.
My husband was found not guilty, but now this is continued. The other night, this officer is across the street at Star Hill Brewery having beers and telling the, my employees and the people all around in Star Hill that my husband hit him with a car. We already have a big problem downtown with crime and the whole perception that it's not safe. Going around telling false things that are completely false, been proven in court and is on videos, a couple of the councilmen have seen the video, is disparaging not only to us, is slanderous, but is also to the city. It's not helping our, how we look to other people, trying to get them to go downtown. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in just this one building alone, trying to get something good for downtown and something that's positive without the negative things that have been going on downtown. And this officer just going amok with comments like this is a terrible look for us and the whole city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we'll now hear from a group representative regarding the school board, from Vicente Gonzalez from Queer Town Hall. Please restate your name, group representative, and locality of residence.
Hi, I'm Vicente Gonzalez. I received help writing this from other members from the Equity Task Force, but I'm not representing the Equity Task Force. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of Queer Town Hall. I'm here to voice our disappointment in the school board's decision to dissolve the Equity Task Force. The school board is enacting an anti-diversity agenda, which has been championed by many of the conservative members of this city council. I'm disappointed in the school board's decision, but also their disingenuous and misleading comments to the public. Both Martin Day and Farid Jalil suggested that the task force hasn't been contributing. I find this offensive to not only this past year's task force, but to the many members of our community who are former members of the committee, many of whom are some of our most beloved civil rights leaders. This past year's Equity Task Force was one of the most active advisory committees, meeting monthly, and creating a structure and voting system which was agreed upon through a democratic process. The task force spent almost the entirety of the second semester requesting to be put on the agenda. When denied, we were forced to give our second report of the year during public comment. Also, it is the school board's responsibility to provide a charge to its committees. It is also the responsibility of the school board to appoint a representative from the board to the task force, which they did not do. Letitia Lowry claimed that the task force should be dissolved because we did not produce the academic goals last year, and we didn't get anything out of them last year. Yet, the school board never requested that the task force be charged with specific academic goals. In addition, there already is an advisory committee which focuses on academic excellence, so why not bring that same energy for that committee? None of the metrics used to rationalize the dissolvement of the Equity Task Force were used against any of the other advisory committees. The school board did not task us with reporting on academics, nor did they task us with reporting on staff recruitment and retention, as Mr. Jalil mentioned. What they tasked us to do falls under the access and barriers, and they unilaterally ignored our recommendations and have hence created additional barriers to marginalized students. Ms. Precedent mentioned that the task force is about creating an opportunity for conversations between the board and the community. An essential component to equitable decision-making is having the conversations with the community. The school board has now effectively eliminated an opportunity to engage with the community and better understand the needs of students, families, staff, and community members. The bottom line is that the school board wants the freedom to pass even more sweeping anti-D E I initiatives without any disturbance. The Equity Task Force represents a community base that would have consistently stood in their way. It's a shame to our LCS family, our city, and to our students. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now hear from a group representative regarding tax reductions, Lynchburg 2425, Mr. Gary Woodson from the Lynchburg Breakfast Club. Please restate your name, group representative, and locality of residence.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, my name is Gary Woodson. I'm Ward III, and I represent the Lynchburg Breakfast Club. Five of the seven of you have spoken at the Lynchburg Breakfast Club. I'd like to extend an invitation to the other two that haven't spoken to speak in the coming weeks. Each of you have been given two exhibits, tax relief, tax relief, one is pink there. And the reason is, 572 individuals have qualified for tax relief this year in this city. Due to the number of applications and allocated funds, not all were given full tax relief. I have been told this is the first time that full tax relief has not been given to those qualifying individuals. But there are many that are burdened with high taxes within the city of Lynchburg. A good example, of course, is the many times within the city where the real estate is sold at public auction to satisfy the, whoops, the tax burden there. So with that being said, but during recent weeks, I've had an opportunity to visit many residents of Ward II and homeowners in Ward II. They have expressed need for real estate tax relief and other needs, as I've talked to them during the last three to four weeks. Ward II residents have many needs, and real estate is one that needs to be addressed. Instead of having higher real estate taxes, citizens need a control on spending. And I want to take a page out of Donald Trump's playbook. We need a government efficiencies czar like Elon Musk, and we need someone in the city to address the spending that we have. Now, this is my opinion, there's a current member, at-large member of city council, that can play this role, and that person is a resident of Ward II. So I would like for that to be considered there as far as getting additional tax relief to each individual citizen. Exhibit green here, a question, setting real estate tax rates. Should a person exempt from paying real estate taxes be a decision-maker in setting real estate rates for our citizens? This is a concern in one of our largest city counties, which is Arlington, Virginia, is kind of on the election process up there for this coming cycle. As each taxpayer and real estate owner should take full advantage of every legal exemption, local, state, and federal, as far as paying taxes, whether it be real estate or whatever it might be. So my question is, should the decision of policy maker that pays no real estate taxes recuse themselves when setting real estate taxes for the upcoming years? In closing, I'd like to say, let's unify and reduce costs to our real estate owners. And I will quote a little quote here from President Barack Obama in delivering his 2012 budget. Everyone needs to do their fair share. And I think that's well stated. Myself, I have reached out in recent weeks to several media outlets to investigate some of the spending that occurs within the city. Thank you all.
Thank you. We will now hear from a group representative regarding recent developments in city council elections. Jeff Rosner from the Lynchburg Democratic Committee. Please restate your name, group representative, and locality of residence.
Yes, I'm Jeff Rosner, Lynchburg resident, and I am representing the Lynchburg Democratic Committee. There is some unfinished business from the June primary election. It concerns two statements about how the absentee ballot drop box was handled in the past, that is, before the June primary. From the Lynchburg Republican City Committee Facebook page, June 22, quote, "It has been reported to us that evidence came to light during the central absentee precinct, CAP, that the formerly Democrat-led Electoral Board allowed ballot box manipulation for years," unquote. From the Peter Alexander for City Council Facebook page, June 22, quote, "Election staff confirmed that it had been standard practice to allow the ballot drop box to be stuffed until Friday, which violates Virginia law," unquote. There may have been a statement about this by an election staff member, but the Electoral Board Chair and the Registrar have confirmed that there is no evidence for the supposed past actions described in the two Facebook posts that I just quoted. The Republican Committee and Mr. Alexander could have found out the truth about past absentee ballot processing before making their Facebook statements. The Republican Committee and Mr. Alexander should provide retractions of their statements. They should apologize to the present and former Electoral Board members, both Republicans and Democrats. They should also apologize to the present and former registrars. On a different development, this month, city council member Jeff Helgason withdrew as a candidate for reelection. The Republican Committee selected another candidate, which the law allows. But what about the timing? Mr. Helgason told WSET that he's been considering stepping down for over a year. If he had announced in March or earlier that he would not run, one or more new candidates might have filed for the state-run primary. Also, he announced his withdrawal on September 2. That left little time for independent candidates to file documents, including 125 petition signatures, by the September 6 deadline. All of this is perfectly legal, but is it democratic?
Thank you. Okay, the next section is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Consideration of introducing a resolution and amending the fiscal year 2025 city, federal, state aid fund budget, and appropriating $9,500 of certified local government grant to fund a national alliance of preservation commission commissioner assistance and mentoring program workshop. This item was presented to council during our business item briefings earlier today. May I have a motion? May I have a motion?
Sorry, I'm pulling it back up.
Oh, okay.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Councilman Taylor?
Go ahead.
Okay, Dr. Wilder?
No comments.
Questions or discussion? No? Okay, let's vote.
Okay, the vote's in progress.
The vote's in progress. The motion passed seven zero.
Okay. Consideration of introducing a resolution and amending the fiscal year 2025 city, federal, state aid fund budget and appropriating $322,000 from the Virginia Outdoor Foundation and Department of Conservation and Recreation Grants for Paramount Park Improvements. This item was presented to council during our business item briefings earlier today. May I have a motion? Vice President Foley?
So moved.
Okay. For a second?
Second.
Okay. Vice President Foley?
Looking forward to see as the development and improvements come to the city and especially Ward Four in an area that does need this type of service. So I thank you all for getting it to this point. I'm looking forward to a ribbon cutting at some point and bringing Duke along for the dog park.
Good. Dr. Wilder?
Again, I'm just glad to see them continue to work on that project in the Paramount area. I know they've been asking for additional park sites there, so I'm glad to see that come forward. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? No? All right, let's vote.
All right, the vote's in progress. The motion passes seven zero.
Okay, great. Okay, just as a reminder again, tomorrow is September 11. And again, I want to thank all of our veterans and our first responders in memory of 9/11. And if you haven't had a chance, go out to the Field of Honor along Gravesville Road and, and just take a look. It is really remarkable. With that said, the meeting is adjourned, and our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held on September 24, 2024 at 4:00. Yeah, September 24, 2024 at 4:00 p.m. in Council Chamber.